I'd like to call this meeting to order. In state that this meeting being held in compliance with the provision of the Open Public Meetings Act, PL nineteen seventy-five, chapter two thirty-one, it was properly noted and been posted and certified by the court. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hoppercamp.
Here.
Ms. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Schindler.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mayor Francis.
Here.
Please join me in block sleep.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Committee report, Tom, we'll start with you.
Yes, good evening, everybody. So just to point your attention to a few things coming up on April twenty-fifth. Yes, April twenty-fifth at two P M. We have a new group coming in. It's called Balance and Fall Prevention. Yes, it is for senior citizens that have problems with mobility, dizziness. And it can also be a good class for those with vertigo. So you don't have to be a senior citizen that's having difficulty walking. Lots of people have vertigo for various reasons, usually that's virus. But this class can help you navigate through that to improve your balance and to minimize fall risk. So that will be at the Hope and Surrounding Recovery Group, April twenty-fifth at two P M. It'll be represented by Diana Sapula, who is a physical therapist. Refreshments will also be provided.
Is there a fee?
There is no fee. Everything that happens at the community center is free of charge. All services are free. On May third, we have the Journey Bus. That will be out in the parking lot if you need anything from the county. They are also giving out food, I heard today, so between ten and two on May third. On April twenty-seventh, we typically have the Center for Prevention at the community center, but I wanted to let you know that session will be canceled. The Center for Prevention has an event that they need to attend that night. They will return to the community center on May eleventh from three to seven P M. We also took a winter break from Meet the Mayor. Hope you enjoyed that, but I'm bringing you back.
Okay.
So Meet the Mayor will resume on May fifteenth at six thirty. I'll send you a reminder. So if anyone has any questions or any topic they would like to discuss, even this topic here tonight about owning chickens, feel free to come by to the community center and the mayor would be happy to sit and talk with you about whatever your concerns are. Also want to let everyone know that we do have formula and diapers for people that are in need of those. Proof of residence is required. So, and only two cans of formula will be given out because we want to make sure everyone has a chance to get something. So two cans of formula will be given out. If we have your size diapers, we will certainly give those diapers and help out these young families, but proof of residence is required. I think that is, no, it's not it. So there's been a lot of requests for PTSD support groups. It's very difficult to get someone in to facilitate that because people want to be paid. We don't pay people. Everything that we have is a service to our residents. So when talking with Hope and Surrounding Recovery Group, who we partnered with, I think like two years ago, for right now, there is a PTSD support group. That's taking place at the Andover United Methodist Church. And that will be on the second and fourth Wednesday of each month. So the Andover United Methodist Church will have PTSD support. That's for veterans and first responders. In the near future, I do have a lead on getting a PTSD support group in our town where people don't have to travel. I'm working on that. I'll have more announcements on that in May, but we are working on getting our own support group right here in town, here at the community center. I think we have someone that will do it as a service to the community. And I'll announce more on that as we get closer. But for right now, feel free to go on the second and fourth Wednesday, fourth Wednesdays to the Andover Church. And I think that's it for now.
Thank you. Brad, you're up.
Mayor, just a couple of quick things. This Saturday morning at nine o'clock till twelve o'clock, the Environmental Commission that I'm on will be giving out free tree seedlings. This year, they cut us back dramatically, so we're really only getting about half of what we normally get. I don't have any update on the tree varieties there are. But we start at nine o'clock and go till the trees are given out, or we quit at noon. And they give the rest of them out probably at the block party. Regarding, I just want to give a shout out to Sunnyside. Sunnyside, Grannis came in and did the landscaping on the front of the Borough Hall as far as the overgrown trees to the right. As you walk into the Borough Hall, it's all on the right there. And they also cleaned up probably maybe half of the area that's going to become the Roadory and Remembrance Park and on the other side of the parking lot here. So they wanted to do something for the town. I'd just like to thank them for their nice job. That's it.
Good job.
Hey, thank you, Sunnyside. That's really great. So I'm going to put on my salesman hat a little bit here, and I'm going to talk about the real estate committee. So we, in the next two or three months, in general, we're going to have some more properties that are going to be coming up to auction through the normal process. But one of the big things I want to hit on is we have three properties that are up for sale with maxspan.com. And that is an auction site. And there are three properties, two of them on Brooklyn Sparta Road and one of them on Greenwood Ave. One is thirty-nine acres, the other is five point three acres. Those are on Brooklyn Sparta Road. And then the other acreage is five point nine five on Greenwood Ave. You just have to go to maxspan.com and they have all the information on the property. And bidding closes May fourth at eleven A M. So please get out and bid on these. These are great properties. You make the decision. That's my personal opinion. But, you know, the other thing is that I want to sort of explain one of the reasons why we do this. You know, these are properties that are basically been foreclosed on by the town. People couldn't do anything with them, haven't been paying their taxes, and we foreclose and we get them back. And they've been sitting on a list for years and years and years, and even some were just put on the list last year. But just for a reference, Ron Tappin actually put this information together last year. But from two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty-two, we had over twenty-nine properties that we actually sold and put back on the tax rolls. And basically, we sold them for a net of six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. But the bigger point is that since they're now back on the tax rolls, they have assessments. And the assessments basically come out to almost four million dollars. So that in itself helps. And it isn't just me, the county, the board, it's everyone in town. Because when they put values on property, they look at the whole town, excuse me, not on properties, on our tax rate. They look at the values of the whole town put together. And adding in an extra four million dollars over those years really helps out. And it helps all of us because it makes our share of that budget smaller. Okay? So, that being said, please get out and bid on our properties. Okay? That's it. Thank you.
John, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. First from the Recreation Commission, their meeting last week, they had a little bit of discussion about the Eagle Scout Project that is underway with putting up a storage shed at the skate park. And the comment there was that he had, since at the meeting, he had already been to the last council meeting. They discussed that a little bit. We're looking forward to that and, you know, kudos to that young man. Also, a little bit of discussion about the tennis program. At that point, it was passed on to the school because the school controls the scheduling of the tennis courts. So not sure where that's going yet. Street hockey has started. It actually started a few weeks ago. I think it started before our last meeting. Right now, there are seventy-seven players. That's slightly less than last year, but so far, it's going very well. We had a discussion about the Easter Egg Hunt, which was a great success. Talked about a few tweaks that we might make for next year, but otherwise, it was just kind of everybody patting themselves on the back. Basketball, there was discussion about basketball. They're looking to close the books on basketball, but they haven't got all the bills yet, so they can't really do that. The Recreation Commission will be participating in the Memorial Day Parade, and I'll leave it at that. I don't want to spoil anybody's thunder, but they're going to be part of it, so that's actually a good thing. The next two events that they have coming up are concerts in the park. The first one is scheduled for July eighth, that's a Saturday. Second one is August nineteenth. And they had a little bit of discussion. They may or may not be trying to do a third one at some point with the high school band. Don't know when or where. From the Environmental Commission, as Brad said, the tree giveaway is this Saturday from nine to twelve. However, footnote is while supplies last because we did get half the trees that we normally get. And the NJ Forestry Division is who gives us the trees. And they were very fair because they have limited supply this year. They gave the same amount to every town, regardless of what each town asked for. So that's quite fair. The Bird Walk is scheduled for May sixth. May have to be rescheduled because the guy from the Orban Society can't make it on that date. I would offer to do it, but I could point out the birds, but have no clue what they are other than birds. So I probably won't offer to do that. Anyway, again, they are looking for a replacement, but if they don't find one, they will probably reschedule that. And obviously, I'll have more on that as time goes by. Not from a committee, I'll put on my salesman hat. The Miss Hope and Surrounding Pageant is scheduled for July ninth in the gazebo in Maxim Glen at one P M. And once again, that is sponsored by the Hope and Surrounding Warrior Youth Football Program. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Brad, you're up.
Okay, I'll start off with the elephant in the room. We just had a Board of Health meeting where we discussed the chicken ordinance. And the board decided to make some revisions to it and send it to the Ag Board and Sussex County Board of Health for their input. So it is not recommended from the Board of Health to the Borough Council. That's what happened at the Board of Health meeting. Over at the Chamber of Commerce, our next B two B breakfast is May ninth. The next meeting is May twelfth. We're gearing up for the Expo on June first. That's in the planning stages, so go ahead and mark your calendars. Up to the Sussex County Municipal Utilities Authority, the next paper shredding event is April twenty-first. And last but not least, I'd like to invite everybody to come out to the Backon High School Spring Musical Bye Bye Birdie, May fourth through seven. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, on the Memorial Day Parade, to save the date, the letters went out to everyone in town that has participated in the past, plus a few extras. I have some blank forms if anybody knows of anyone that wants to participate that has not ever done it before and has a good thing they want to do. We have quite a few cars, antique cars and unique cars coming to us. I think we have the Army Reserve Professional Color Guard. And I'm still looking for a guilty or a drummer for the seriousness of the beginning of the parade. So all the fun will be at the back end. But we would like to start it out because Memorial Day is a very serious celebration. We're also looking to add a dog section in costumes. They must be well behaved, licensed and have all their shots. But that will be a nice addition, I think, this year. They will be in the same area, so they have to be able to get along with each other. If anybody is interested in creating a float of any kind, we'll still be reaching out for that very soon. We're welcoming that or any additional music. We have the high school band. But if anyone knows of any other types of music, I tried to get some mummers. We've talked about some other things. So if anybody has any suggestions, we're open to that. And we have a new firework event that may happen this year on July fifteenth, more to come, that is being sponsored by a town business owner. He is donating the money for an evening of fireworks. So I will keep you posted on that. And I would like you all to be reminded, I'm sure everyone here has the Nixal eight 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 seven seven seven, but if you don't, please tell everyone you know to sign up because we'll be sending out whether if it's a rain date for the parade, if it's canceled, which it will be if it's pouring. There is no rain date. And we're going to try to start using it to remind people of other big events in town to continue the communication throughout the group. That's all I have right now.
Thank you. Administrator report, you're up, please.
Thank you, Mayor. To follow up on what I reported at the last council meeting, we are in the process of looking at the time and efficiency study with the departments and gathering data and information. That will continue through May, so we'll have two months of data as a base or benchmark, which will feed into some initially rudimentary type of reports and graphs, and then hopefully move into something more robust as that program gets developed. I would like to report on some issues with DPW or work on from DPW. The spring season has picked up significantly. There has been some curbside leaf pickup. We placed about two hundred cubic yards of mulch at the playgrounds of Motive Park. There's new waste stations for our parks. Nine have been installed, one at Borough Hall, Public Safety Building, Motive Park and Maxim Glen. They removed the salt spreaders and they were safely out of winter. Sweep, sweep, sweeping is underway and patchwork on the roads. And on the PFAS update, the plumbing has started with well twelve. And on the Mariner Well, the electrical upgrades have been completed. JCPN L will do power switch over on April twenty-sixth. And April twenty-sixth is the bid opening for the concrete pad for that unit.
Thank you. All right, public comment?
I'll make a motion, second.
All in favor? An opportunity is given in public for commentary. Comments are limited to one comment of no more than five minutes. Welcome public.
Rachel Rodriguez, Nine Skyline Drive. My first question, I'm probably going to ask at every meeting now that it's getting warmer out. Northwood Grants, anything on the two grants up in Northwood? If we can just clarify where the food donation locations are in town. Third question is the wellness center hours for donations. The only, I guess, what donations you are accepting are what's changed with that and what the hours are to people who need the donations, know where to go in there. The auction, it's the one of Sparta Stanhope, correct? Not Brooklyn Stanhope? The materials you have that you're reading off of, it says Sparta Stanhope on there, correct? Just to make sure. Yeah, I just want to confirm that. It wasn't a misprint. Okay. Perfect. And then the Memorial Day Parade. I saw your safety post in the Facebook group. That was fantastic. I just want to confirm, costumes are not required for the dogs, right?
Yeah, no, not at all. But it's just a collar or a bandana, if they want. It's just a fun thing.
Okay. Is there a maximum number of dogs? I suppose.
I would like everyone to register with me in some way so that I have an idea. I don't need three hundred dogs that day.
Right, no, I figured that's why I'm asking, okay. And then who's going to be confirming vaccinations and licensing and subsidy on the dogs that are applying for the parade?
I have to work on that and I'll figure it out.
You have to have that to get a license.
Right, yeah, you have to have your vaccinations have a license. So if they're wearing their collar with the license, they'll be accepted. I guess they should be wearing their license. It's a little metal tag, a current one. And I realize that they're all now, the current licenses that were renewing and supposedly renewing in June are not renewing until December. So if they have a two thousand twenty-two to twenty-three, it'll be allowed because it'll be before, you know, we're extending that. I understand that.
Brad, do you need help distributing the seedlings? Do you need to ask the scouts? Maybe they can use the community service? If not, it's okay?
We're, because we have a limited number, they decided not to ask the scouts.
Okay, that's no problem.
They give them help every other year.
I thought I'd ask. I thought I'd ask. Because I know they all need community. They need a minimum of twelve hours a year, so, but that's totally interesting. I wanted to know which company was sponsoring the fireworks for the.
Hold on. It's the guy that has done it here before. Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, sure. I'm sorry. And then the PFAS stuff. What project is that? The PFAS project construction that's on the agenda? And then the loan you guys are going out through the infrastructure financing program? How much is that for? That's it. Thank you.
Want me to go through the water thing again? Basically, I think we should have somebody for emergencies on staff that you don't have to make. If it's an emergency, you shouldn't have to make an appointment. And we should cut down a fee if you're not getting shut off because you didn't pay your bill. I cut it down. Okay. Several employees have municipal cars, and I want to know if they're allowed to be used for personal use? Are they covered by insurance for out of state travel? And who's responsible paying the gas? Short and sweet. Thank you.
All public?
I have one more question.
Not really, but go ahead.
Have you guys ever considered leveraging Hope and Surrounding owned companies for any landscaping services? Do we know of any residents who own companies here that we can work with to support small businesses in town as opposed to outsourcing out of town? Thank you.
It's Garden State Fireworks. Garden State Fireworks.
Oh.
Business, though, right?
I thought you said there was a small business.
Oh, there is. It's E and T.
Oh, E and T. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
It's going to be a group, actually.
It's going to be a group.
Oh, okay.
And we don't know that the final group is. We don't allow personal usage, of course.
Want to move to bring it back?
Oh, yes, let's move it back. More public, we're done.
More public? I'll move to bring it back.
Second. All in favor? We don't allow personal usage of our vehicles, of course. The shut-off charge is, that's by ordinance, is it not, John?
Correct.
Okay.
What do you mean no personal use of the cars? I thought there were like eight borough cars.
Pardon me?
Aren't there five borough cars?
We're in fur cars are not used for personal use.
So they're not used to go home?
It depends on if we're going to do business, if the person has to do business. If I ask them to do something on the way here or the way there. Yeah, that's it.
And so there's no person who can take it out of state then, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I was asking if we can lower the fee for people that have an emergency and need it by ordinance? Can we lower the fee rather than have the sixty dollars?
To reopen the ordinance, yeah.
Yes. Thank you.
Question on the PFAS? Well, go ahead, Sam.
Yeah, in the personnel policy manual that's adopted by the council, there are certain department employees or department heads that are taking the vehicle home, such as the chief release as an example.
Right. CPW supervisor.
Yeah.
Administrator.
There's some.
Assessor.
Yeah, not all of them actually take the vehicle home, but they're permitted to by the personnel policy.
Yes.
What was the PFAS question?
What, which project?
Huh?
Which charger?
And how much is the loan for?
It's all of them. Which one are we talking about?
This is about the resolution. So it is authorizing the engineer for construction phase services for the PFAS removal project.
That's on all the wells?
Yeah.
You hit that. All of our wells are the project.
But why would we need?
We have six wells. That's the PFAS project.
But why would we need a project, an engineer for project construction on? We have two wells that are already done.
Yeah.
But we have six wells.
Yeah. This would be on the.
Not done yet.
This would be on the ongoing wells, and you need the engineer to sign off on the construction phase of the project. It would be a.
So this is borrowing more money than what we borrowed before?
There's two separate things. One is a resolution twenty-three, twenty twenty-three eighty-six that authorizes the engineer to, or engaging the engineer for construction phase services for the PFAS removal. And then there is a resolution authorizing the application for a loan from the New Jersey Environmental Infrastructure Financing Program. So they're two separate actions.
And they don't have anything to do with each other?
One is for the engineer to do engineering services and the other is the application for the loan.
And how much is the loan for?
We don't know yet.
Yeah, we won't know that until we get bid prices on the next phase of.
It could be up to a million dollars, but that's the loan that forgives the principal.
I remember that. Okay.
Yeah, that's so. So the number, the number could be up to a million dollars or less.
And this is for the well? This is for the well project? The public.
Down the well so we get zero detect on PFAS, like three of our wells are currently.
Are done. Okay.
So our goal is to have every well with a zero detect.
I thought all of this was already done and we were just in like the implementation process of all six of them.
We're doing this incrementally so that it's affordable.
Got it.
But we're doing it, we're doing it under the, on the direction of the D E P.
Thank you.
Reluctant, but they're qualified.
We didn't answer the insurance question or the gas. I asked if they're covered by insurance for out of state travel because originally you said they weren't taking it home. And who's responsible to pay the gas for taking cars home?
If it's a borough vehicle, the borough puts the gas in it.
Are they covered by insurance for out of state travel?
And, yeah, the vehicles are covered for insurance as well as all of our facilities and properties and employees.
If we send a team to Delaware to go to a, an event for training or whatever it is, I would encourage people to use, to go to carpool with the borough car.
I'm not asking.
Paying the amount to the person is more expensive than using the borough car. So we try to use practicality of it.
I am not asking about using the car. I'm asking about the insurance covered out of state for the car because some of them are not covered out of state.
We are.
Okay, thank you.
All more vehicles are covered.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we got it all right.
No, we, Ms. Rachel had questions.
Sorry.
Can you repeat?
Yeah, sorry.
The Northwood Grants, she asked about the Northwood Grants.
That's still open. We don't know. We won't know that till.
That's great. Yeah, I'm going to keep asking. The food donation, the food donation bins, can we confirm the current locations of those since there's been some movement?
That's Women's Club, that's not.
No, I can answer to that. There's five locations. I can send it to you and I can also repost it on the community center's page. You go ahead and lift that off of there. We just posted that a few weeks ago, but I realized things moved down the feed and then it's all gone. There's five locations, viable food pantries.
One of them's right here, right?
One of them's right here, yep. One in Sparta.
We invented the church of the food pantry.
Yep, yeah.
We work with them a lot.
Yeah. But there's five very good ones. I can certainly send that to you and I'll also post it.
Okay.
And then you had another one.
Yeah, just confirming, well, I guess that's two parts about the wellness center.
Okay.
I know for a while you guys were accepting food donations. You're only accepting certain donations. I just want to be sure what's clear.
Sure. So during the pandemic, when we're in a state of emergency, I did food then. We took in food, we sent. We took in food, we sanitized it, we did a contactless delivery. We were not open, uh, for groups or anything, but we were able, uh, Dorian and I, so there was no one in there. People would drop off at the back door, I'd sanitize, let it sit overnight, then we'd move it out the front door and drop it off at, on people's porches, it was mostly seniors that were shut-ins. That was during the pandemic, four months during that. Um, so since we were never designed to be a food pantry and we don't have it in the budget to hire someone that would manage the food, um, we've returned to our original purpose, which is to get, uh, support groups, programs, things that benefit the community. During the holidays, however, we do, since we have a nice freezer, um, we do take turkeys and ham. So people that are on our giving tree, remember the giving tree for the less fortunate in town? They can also get a turkey and a ham, or a ham, uh, along with their gifts to have their Christmas meal. So that's, Christmas and Easter is usually when we get donations of turkeys and hams. Um, since, like I said, we stopped in July of twenty, doing the, doing the food and now we have a dedicated list of food pantries that people can start to return to now. I hope that was...
Yeah, 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 and then just the, the hours for anybody, I'm sorry, what donations are you accepting? So baby formula, diapers?
Yeah, and any, anything, you know, we have a lot of struggle in young families, anything that helps mom with baby, uh, we're, we're taking. The hours, though, are nine to one, Monday through Friday. But whenever, I realize people work and I live five minutes from the center, so whenever someone needs a different time, myself or Dorian, she's also very quick to volunteer to do that. Um, we will meet people after hours, we've done that plenty of times, we do that habitually. Um, because not everyone can make it between nine and one.
Right.
So if someone says I can't make it, I ask them when they can and either Dorian or myself will go and meet them and we try and accommodate everyone.
Thank you.
Did I get every, every?
Yeah, that was it.
Okay, thanks, Rachel.
We're good?
We're good.
Next up is a presentation by the Lake of Patcon Foundation and Commission, welcome and thank you for coming.
I think we may be one hand out short, I'm sorry. My error, I, I had it all figured out, how many I needed. Okay, there's that one extra, it's a half-sized one. Uh, well, thanks again for giving us the opportunity.
So, so tell everybody who you are.
Who you are, um, thanks for giving us the opportunity. It's really a joint presentation of the, um, Lake of Patcon Commission and Lake of Patcon, Lake of Patcon Foundation, excuse me to say. So we have, um, Colleen Lyons, who is the administrator of the Lake of Patcon Commission, Kyle Richter, who is the executive director of the Lake of Patcon Foundation, and myself, who's been volunteering for quite some time now, Marty Kane, um, who is the chair of the Lake of Patcon, uh, Foundation, who's now eleven years old. Um, and what we really want to do is quickly, just to give a, a run-through of, of kind of what things look like and some of the big projects ahead of us. We'll kind of kick it off with a, a topic near and dear to everybody's heart, weeds, and, uh, we'll throw it over to...
Aquatic weeds?
Yes.
Um, so Brad sits on the commission, so I, I know he diligently keeps you all informed with every, every news, so... So, yes, the harvesting program will be running a full program this year under the commission, uh, under the commission. So we will be starting in May, working on hiring, uh, another full-time and some other seasonals this year, um, to manage the harvesting on the lake. In terms of harmful bloom, harmful algal bloom efforts, um, we do have some concern over the warm winter and lack of ice on the lake. Our environmental consultants expressed those concerns in terms of, um, just maybe an earlier bloom or more, you know, just having that sunlight, uh, hitting the sediments all, all year, so. Um, we are hoping to do a lakewide alum treatment, uh, this season. Um, some of the timing is just gonna depend on when our grant agreement comes through from DEP. Uh, the commission was awarded, uh, one million dollars through the lake's funding program through DEP. Um, and that was in partnership, was it in partnership? With support from the foundation, so, uh, most of our grants are in partnership. And then we have some ongoing stormwater projects just to manage nutrients coming into the lake from the watershed. So it's really, you're gonna hear that a lot throughout our presentation, is just managing nutrients to try and, uh, limit blooms and aquatic weed growth.
And then as the mayor likes to remind us, in a perfect world, you'd never need alum, but it is a Band-Aid approach that we're trying to use to, to limit, uh, possible harmful algal blooms at this point. Now we're gonna get to the two really exciting proj, projects, so...
Oh, I thought there was a microphone on there.
You try.
Um, and so another, um, project that both the Lake of Patcon Foundation and the Lake of Patcon Commission are working on along, not just with ourselves, but with the mayors from the, the four towns and working with, um, New Jersey DEP would be a lakewide aeration system. Um, kind of a little bit of a different system than is in Crescent Cove, this would be a, hopefully a direct oxygen system. Um, but we have identified a private donor who would be willing to put up funds for the installation, um, of that system and we've been conducting meetings, um, with experts and with all four mayors, the DEP, both the commission and the foundation to move this process forward. Um, and was it last month, um, the New Jersey Highlands Council approved a grant that would fund the engineering and study designs that would really identify, um, the best system for Lake of Patcon where compressors would go on the shores to really make this a shovel-ready project that hopefully we can implement in twenty twenty-four. Um, it would be a great, uh, project for helping mitigate harmful algal blooms on Lake of Patcon, so we're hoping to see this project really move forward.
And, and truth be told, um, the person sitting in the middle of all you tonight is, uh, highly responsible for aeration getting off the ground. Mayor Francis has been on this one, obviously from Crescent Cove, but, um, this idea of a lakewide aeration, he is a beat the drum on.
Yeah.
Would you say constantly?
Always.
Almost as often as...
Yes.
Almost as often as...
And just to, it would be, um, the aeration system would cover approximately nine hundred acres, um, in the, the center of the lake, so it would be a great system to have.
Yeah, with that, um, sewers for Jefferson, um, even though you say, why are we talking about sewers for Jefferson, Warren Hope Packon? Uh, the mayors have, have agreed that there's probably no bigger project that you could undertake for Lake of Patcon than, than, than sewers for Jefferson. When Roxbury and Mount Arlington were getting all sewed up and Hope Packon moved forward and got about fifty-five percent of the town done or borough, some...
We took forty septic systems offline last year.
And we, and continues to advance on sewers. Jefferson doesn't have any part of the lake with sewers and their lakefront homes account for about forty percent of the homes on the lake. And look, we all know how septic systems are, um, you know, some are very good and some aren't. And, you know, the source of phosphorus in the lake, you know, can point heavily toward these systems and if there's one project that would really, um, and has the strongest advocacy of all four mayors is sewers for Jefferson. We kind of never thought we'd probably see the door open for that kind of money again. But I have to say, um, Mayor Will Susan, in conversations with, uh, their congressional representative, your former congressional representative, um, Representative Sherrill, uh, brought all this up and in the, um, Water Resources Development Act for last year, what they call WERA, they actually got ninety million dollars into the bill, uh, authorizing sewers. Now, authorizing the money, you still don't have it in your pocket, means you can spend it when you get it. So it's, you know, still a waste, but it's the first time something like this had advanced that far and it was a huge first step. Um, and just, um, actually, um, last week, um, through the community-funded projects, which, uh, each, uh, congressional representative can put fifteen projects forward and at least in the last two years, every project congressional representatives have put forward have been funded. Uh, Representative Sherrill put the engineering work for that, um, some seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, to fund, the work that would be needed with the Army Corps of Engineers, so this is a huge first step and it, if the engineering gets work done, basically, uh, the Army Corps of Engineers will officially undertake the project and then they would look to fully fund the rest of that ninety million dollars of sewers. Look, it's, it's, it's good, it's a very long process, I think all of us would sign up right now if you told us in twenty thirty-three they're gonna be digging sewers in Jefferson, but it's really starting an inch forward and I have to say it's something we never thought we'd see. And now we just have to build the momentum and I have to say, your new representative, uh, Tom Kane, um, has said he will do anything he can do to help Representatives Sherrill. I mean, now, it is, Congress has moved over to Republican side, we don't know how, if all these projects will be funded again. And we just got word today that actually the Jefferson Sewers also made the list for Senators Booker and Menendez, which we were a little surprised at, so that, it's starting to get a lot more momentum for it and it, we're really hopeful because there's nothing greater we could do for the lake than to see that whole part of the lake with sewers. Oh, okay, wow, this is an easy one, because, uh, on advocacy for the lake, as, as, uh, was already alluded to, um, we've really kicked it off well, the four mayors are working really well together in this area. We have quarterly meetings now with DEP and, you know, we all get frustrated with DEP. I know you have a history, every, of our municipalities has a history with DEP. But I have to say, at least on, on some of these projects we're working on, we are starting to get some cooperation. It may not always be what we're looking for and there may be some frustrations, but, um, we really have found some good people to work with and some of these projects really are starting to move forward and, uh, we hope to have actually the commissioner down at the block party this year.
He's supposed to be at the block party, yes.
And he's been out on the lake, uh, each of the last few years, so that's been good. And we have a yearly meeting with him every year right before Christmas time and it's become actually an enjoyable meeting. Um, the statewide, uh, funding, um, you know, we all know that a lot of money goes to the Jersey Shore and, and, you know, even though the lakes support a lot of recreational use in New Jersey, there was really no source of funding. The Lake of Patcon Commission, you know, specifically, um, thanked this, thanks to specific legislation, was getting five hundred thousand. There's no general money that comes to public lakes. And, you know, public lakes serve the public and we, we all know, Lake of Patcon, I mean, gets a lot of public people, whether it's on Patcon State Park or other use. So two years ago, we started with getting specific funding for public lakes and ten million dollars, uh, came through and I have to say, all our local legislators from, you know, Senator Orojo and his team, Senator Buco, all were so supportive of this. And one point seven billion of that has wound up now being awarded to, um, Lake of Patcon, a million to the Lake of Patcon Commission, uh, seven hundred thousand to Morris County Parks, that was gonna spend the money over at, uh, Lee's Park in, uh, Mount Arlington and like, a very small one for Ring Gardens in Mount Arlington. But that's a one point seven million that, that is coming directly into Lake of Patcon. Now, we don't have the money yet because in, as DEP does, um, it takes a while to actually see the money, but we're getting close. Colleen assures me that her conversations are going well with them. So, um, we tried getting money last year into the budget and they said, yeah, we haven't spent anything for the last money we gave you, which was true because we didn't have it yet, but this year it's being entertained and because they had more than twenty million dollars in requests from public lakes in New Jersey than they could award, we're going for seventeen million this year. Here again, has strong support, um, from Senators Orojo and, and, and Buco. We actually have, through our Public Lakes Alliance, we've reached out to a lot of Democratic areas of the state, so we have Democratic support for this. You know, when it comes down in Trenton, Democrats still have that majority, we need, uh, these bills to be bipartisan, they have been. So we're very optimistic that we're gonna get, I backed out, I was with Senator Buco earlier today, he still feels very confident we're gonna get these, uh, into the budget this year. So if we get seventeen million in for public lakes, we think we'll fare very well with that, with that we can, anytime we, we're given something like that, we can compete well.
Right, um, there's a few, um, of the community efforts, one of the pillars of the, the foundation's work is to bring the community together around, um, Lake of Patcon. I think the first one is probably the most recognizable thing we, we do, and is our floating classroom. I mean, actually just went into the lake this afternoon and you can see it docked over by the windlass current before we move it over to Hope Packon State Park. We use that for our field trip program and this year we have sixteen hundred students coming out to participate in our field trip program from thirty-two schools across six counties in the state, which is, um, an increase from last year and a, a dramatic, dramatic increase from when we first started the program. Um, and it's great to get all those students out, they go on boat and learn about lake ecology, we take them into the river to learn river ecology, they learn a bit of forest ecology and we do a model, uh, watershed, so they learn about how human actions on land can impact our, our waters and really set it up to be great stewards of our shared environment for the future. Um, and I know that sounds fun and everybody wants to join, so on Mondays, starting the first Monday after the Fourth of July, um, through right before Labor Day, we offer public cruises on the floating classroom where anybody can purchase a ticket and come out and be a kid for a day and learn some science out on the lake. And as always, we'll be looking to expand this program in the future, trying to get every, everybody out and it'd be great to have, uh, school from every county come out, although those South Jersey ones probably don't want to drive this far. Another thing we did this year was we, um, started a pilot shrink wrap recycling, uh, program. Um, I know a few years ago, um, there had been a shrink wrap recycling program run through Morris County at Lee's County Park that was funded through a grant that unfortunately, um, ran out of funding. Um, and so one of the things that I was tasked with this year was starting a shrink wrap recycling program. It's very much a pilot program because I have no idea how to run a recycling program and I'm learning as I go. Um, but, uh, we did, we're successful in finding a company to work with who will accept shrink wrap recycling and it's actually at their facility, which is in Pennsylvania, they break it down into little pellets and where it's then sold to be then reused in other, other materials. Um, we're currently only working with all of the marina owners around the lake, um, and we're partnered with Mount Arlington, um, at their DPWR to have a container there for marina owners to drop off the shrink wrap recycling. It's getting great, uh, feedback, the, the first container is actually full and scheduled to be switched out tomorrow with a new container, um, which is, which is exciting, um, to have this program back, so we're stopping all of that from going into our landfills. And then we just have a few fun community events coming up, um, we have our annual native plant sale, which is, um, a great variety of native plants, which help, which would be great for riparian buffer, shoreline buffer on your property if you want to stop geese from coming onto your property, which is another issue, we're working on that, Colleen will mention later. Um, online ordering starts, uh, April twenty-fifth with pickup, um, at May sixth at our offices at the historic, uh, landing station in Landing. The Hudson Farm Walk is on May thirteenth, this is a great event, um, it's for their Hope Patcon charities. Um, the foundation is, is one of those beneficiaries, we're actually in the same box with the Hope Patcon Community Garden, so if you want to support, great events come out to that one, it's great where they give you money based on your age that you can donate to charity and they donate that money themselves, so it's a great way for you to support local groups without actually having to buy any of your own.
From your grandparents.
Yes, the older the better.
Yeah, it's the only reason they, they kind of like the fact that they're older now.
Yes, that's why we keep you around. Um, and the next thing is probably also one of the, the biggest things the, the foundation is known for around the lake is the Lake of Patcon Block Party, which is on May twentieth, which will be here before you know it and I just wanted to invite, uh, Lee, if you had anything you wanted to share.
Wait, I have a second question.
Yeah.
Could you go over the, the class, the public classroom, the dates and are you taking donations?
For the floating classroom?
For the public, not for the kids?
So, it's on, um, every...
You said four eleven to...
Every Monday, starting the first Monday after the Fourth of July
Okay.
through the last Monday before Labor Day, um, and we always take donations, we're a nonprofit, that's how we, we survive.
But there is a cost for...
But there is a cost to purchase a ticket, um, I believe it is twenty dollars a ticket, although there is, if you're, uh, under twelve or, um, a senior, it, there's a different price range, I'm just...
Can you get the tickets online?
You can purchase the tickets online, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And Lee for the block party, if there's anything you want to...
Thank you, if I may, thank you, okay, your address you're there, the aisle's kind of crowded there. So, so, uh, my name is Lee Moro, I'm privy to be one of Marty and I, Kyle's wingmen and, uh, the block party is one of my projects, uh, along with some others. But I'm here to say thank you to the mayor and to the town council for all the leadership and the support that makes this thing happen. There's a lot of moving parts to it, um, and as a matter of fact, you've brought so much to the block party, you don't fit anymore where you used to be. So this year it's gonna be a little different, we've provided some more space for the mayors and the community policing and if you have attended the block party before, you know, in the pavilion area it might be a little noisy with all the music and entertainment, so we're gonna tone down the music, we're gonna reduce the modern entertainment and allow a lot more mix and mingle uh, from each of the communities and all of the communities and the two counties. So we're looking for ideas from each of the towns that encourage people to come up and meet and greet you if they don't already know you. So it's really just a big thank you, uh, to everybody that helps make this happen. It couldn't happen if the four towns didn't lead forward and help us with some support and some resources. You can't fit four thousand people on that state park, uh, without shadows and support and all that, so thank you very, very much. And then, you know, I have the floor, my second hat is on May twenty-first, I put my Captain Lee hat on and I want to just thank you again, I think you all know that shock heard around the lake came from Mayor Francis and Hope Packon, the first time to shut down half of a bridge, allow their residents to participate in big numbers and really bring a lot more, uh, recognition and support to our veterans, so again, thank you, that is on... That is on June twenty-fourth, and Hope Patcon is on the first cruise. The only real change is that up and working with your representatives is working just as smooth as can be. As you probably know, the American Legion in Jefferson and Esperon Road burnt down. That was the location of the luncheon they did after the cruises. Martin Elks has stepped up to be the location for the complimentary lunch for the veteran, and up to three of his or her guests that day. So anyway, it's been working great, thank you very much. Can't wait to glide up to the River Six Bridge and spend the loiter as much time as we possibly can before we shove off. So thank you very much.
And just the last two is the annual Foundation's Gala on July twentieth, which will be at Stonewater again this year. It's our largest fundraiser of the year. And we use those funds to support some of the grants that the commission applies for as matching funds. And then our Lake Loop, which is a bike paddle run, will be on October first, and it's a great way to get people out recreating around the lake.
Back to me. So I open and close this.
She's starting now. She got the short story, she can talk about geese.
That's true. So geese are an issue on the lake. They contribute to some nutrients through their excrement. So the commission has established a goose committee, and Kyle serves on that committee as well as me. Riveting conversations. So the, we've also started a program with the US Department of Agriculture to start a egg addling program. So April is the representative, she's out in a canoe, addling eggs around the lake to just try and limit next year's population. So really, we're just trying to keep the, for this year, we're trying to just keep the population from growing more. So and some other grant work that we've been doing in Hope Patcon. Mayor Francis knows about many of these, as does Brad, but we're working on a stormwater conveyance in Witten Park that would filter water before it enters the lake. There's high salinity at that location, so we're looking at plants that would be salt tolerant to plant along this conveyance before it enters the lake. This year, through the lake's grant, we'll be doing stormwater outfall cleanouts during the five-year drawdown. So if you can imagine, the outfalls bring stormwater, but they also bring sediment, and these sediment deltas can form in the lake. So while the water is down for the five-foot drawdown, we'll have some help from the DPWs to clean out those sediment deltas. And then we'll also be continuing biochar installation, biochar filtration material that we can use in, what, stormwater devices? I wanna say DMPs, but stormwater devices like in Crescent Cove, the aqua filter units, those now have biochar in them. We're looking through some leftover grant funds to change that out again, and then also install in some other locations through Hope Patcon and around the whole lake.
And you already, we're due to put this, the five-year drawdown starts September twenty-second, is that Sunday?
It really depends on the level of the lake.
Yeah, the level of the lake.
But right now, it's scheduled for September twenty-second. If the lake is lower, it'll start after that.
And with that, one thing that wasn't on this list is the foundation will look to coordinate its five-year, and I shouldn't say annual. We do it every five years, a lake-wide cleanup to help remove some of the beverage that has ended up in our lake. So we look to coordinate that with, to help them all, for these values. The last time we did it, we removed twenty-three thousand pounds of trash.
Yeah.
Hopefully not as much, although if we need to, we will.
And it is, that's one that we get tremendous support from around the lake. I mean, we get upwards of five hundred volunteers out on all parts of the lake for the drawdown. More to follow on that, we'll definitely get you. So with that, if there's any questions.
We answer all of the questions.
Wow, that made it easy. That would, if you look beauty hour, he'd like us to sit down and read. But thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Oh, hey Marty, one question. If Jefferson doesn't want the sewers and the money, can we get the money?
Well, I will say that, you know, I think we have to, though, keep an eye on, you know, how that process moves forward with, to close the gap in Hope Patcon at some point. I mean, I think you have to, you're just a lot less of the problem right now, and you are have made some progress, especially within Crescent Cove in recent years, which is gonna use help.
Yep.
But.
But we're gonna digest the first, we're gonna digest the first thing we did on Hudson, but the intent is to continue that effort. And once we do the rest of Hudson, you're gonna hit max, and then the decision is gonna be, do we turn left or right? But stay along the edge of the lake, and just the whole, the whole purpose of our strategy is to remove lakefront septic.
And, you know, that might be the thing, it's, you know, you don't look for ninety million, but maybe you look for five million at a time or something like that, just to keep your project moving forward.
Yep, okay.
Next one. Okay. There is a lot of work that we do. It's like, people don't even understand just how much effort goes into it, it's a lot. Okay, approval minutes, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of April fifth, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll move it. Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hoppercam.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three eight-three bill list.
Thank you. Does anyone need anything removed or discussed? Not hearing or seeing any mayor, I'll move the bill listing in its entirety.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hoppercam.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Do you have a consent agenda?
We have one thing.
One thing, okay. I want to entertain a motion on the approval we presented, gentlemen.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hoppercam.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
And Mr. Young.
Yes.
Ordinance is either introductions. Ordinance twenty twenty-three five, repealing and replacing chapter thirteen, method for court.
I'll move it.
Second. Call the roll.
Mr. Hoppercam.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
And Mr. Young.
Yes.
Introduction of ordinance twenty twenty-three six, domestic animal.
We're having the agenda table that.
That's the animal one, that's the chickens.
I'll make a motion to table it.
Yeah, the chicken one.
Okay.
Call the roll to table that ordinance.
Mr. Hoppercam.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Ordinance twenty twenty-three seven, amending seventeen twenty-seven and seventeen twenty-eight Losap and ordinance of Deverva Patcon, County Sussex, State of New Jersey, modifying section seventeen dash twenty-seven and seventeen dash twenty-eight regarding Losap. I asked my administrator to explain that.
Yeah, just a point of information for the council to consider. In seven, in section one of this draft ordinance, seventeen twenty-seven C, the amounts to be awarded, minimum of one ninety to a maximum of nineteen hundred. In a review of the updated statutory limits, that is, it's actually one thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. So you may want to consider changing this on introduction to one nine five five, which would make the minimum, which is ten percent of it, a hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifty cents.
Do we have it in the budget?
Yes.
I'll move it. It's fifty-five bucks, right?
Yes.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hoppercam.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
And Mr. Young.
Yes.
So I can report that it's nineteen fifty-five.
Yes.
There's no.
So now we voted on the amendment, now we vote on it?
No.
Or is it all together now?
It's all together, that's what I thought we did.
I'm just asking.
It depends on how the motion was made, was the motion made.
I actually amended it, that's why I'm bringing it up.
The motion is. You think you made a motion to amend it, not to introduce it?
I'll do both.
He did both. He voted to.
I voted on, by the way.
That's the way it's going in the minutes now.
Sounds good.
He made a motion to do both.
Long as he agrees, that's fine.
It's nineteen fifty-five instead of nineteen hundred.
And one ninety-five fifty is there, one hundred.
One ninety-five? Maximum.
So technically, we're corruption, all right?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three eighty-four, authorizing a disclosure agreement for services with Tony Concrete Construction Company Incorporated.
I'll move it.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hoppercam.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three eighty-five, authorizing a contract to Chupano Construction for the Unger Avenue and Leo Avenue Road Construction NJ DOT Project.
I'll move it.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hoppercam.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
And Mr. Young.
And that's the paving project, correct?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three eighty-six, authorizing engineering services for PFAS project construction.
I'll move it.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hoppercam.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three eighty-seven, authorizing a loan application to New Jersey Environmental Infrastructure Financing Program.
I'll move it.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hoppercam.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Resolution twenty twenty-three eighty-eight, authorizing hiring of Michael Townsend as police officer.
I'll move it.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hoppercam.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
And Mr. Young.
Yes.
All business. Under new business, I have the appointment of a Patcon Skate Park Steering Committee. The members will be Alex Orne, Chelsea Lockman, Chris Dempsey, Zachary Menber, Rich Hor, and Mike Francis. This is a steering committee with a term of five years. You want, you want, you know we need a month now, or is this just an appointment?
It's a mayor's appointment, not a committee.
And with that, I get to my comments, so I can explain that. I, the skate park, of course, you know, we were in different pairs, so we just dismantled it because one young fellow broke his leg, and there were other injuries. Most evident, except one piece is still there, was removed. So what I've put together now is these people in this committee are not kids, they're adults. One is an engineer, and the other, there's other people involved with this skate park project throughout the state. It was actual, this is actually a very, a very well-attended activity in many places. Our intent is to make this a destination and really make it a really nice skate park. We have some ideas. Some of it's gonna be do-it-yourself. We've had offers from construction people to help us make forms and make concrete. Actually, we're gonna actually make the concrete devices there. So we'll make the form, we'll bring a cement truck in, we'll actually make them there. It actually, we can actually do it for ten to twenty percent of the actual cost. So if one half-pipe costs a hundred thousand dollars, we could probably do it for ten. Just a rough estimate, but we can do it a lot less for that. And this is a recommendation of the committee. They really want to show that this is possible, and either all members of our community. That they want to, really want to show that if people show the interest, they'll put the sweat equity into the project. If you go there now, we were there talking, we had a meeting, and we're there talking, and they're kids, we have some. We've already built one small ramp, and there's an existing ramp there. And there were actually young kids there kicking up garbage. No one told them to. And the garbage can was full, so what I have to do is make sure we get an empty, we keep an empty garbage can there. But the point is, I think these young people see that we recognize that there is a need for this. There will be an effort for this, and I also have funding for it. I just got a grant for that park, that was very surprising that I got it. But I do have a seventy thousand dollar grant. It's, we have to pay a little bit toward it, but I already have that money in the budget. So we're funded, but it's gonna be up to this committee to build a park that has they'd like to see it, not have we'd like to see it. So when you see the functions there, and you see the kid there enjoying it, it's gonna be what they want to see there. And so, and then we're going to work on it and maintain it. And so that was, that's gonna be a fun project, and just, I'll keep you posted on how that's going. But we're pretty excited about it. They're surprised that the town is supporting them as much as we are. We're really supporting them a lot. And so, nice young people. And next time we have a meeting, if you, if you want, then you're welcome to, it's nice group. As you know, that you just heard about, the lake aeration has been one of my priorities, starting with Crescent Cove, you know. The state hemmed and hawed, and the commission hemmed and hawed, and the foundation hemmed and hawed. And I said, my dammit, you know, I did a lot of research and talked to a lot of people throughout the country, if not the world, about aeration and pond. I say the world, because I did speak to one person in New Zealand through the interview, yes. And so this is not a new problem, it's not the only problem. Every lake has this problem, that of any age. Our lake is eutrophonic. And so Crescent Cove is very popular fishing hole now. And when the people come to eye fish, they fill buckets of perch. Never did that before. But now the aeration, what the aeration has done is it's helped the microorganism. So now what we've done is we, we've encouraged the food chain to come back. I was there last year one evening talking to the one person on the far end, and I actually saw the herring jump. You know, it looked like it was raining, and you see. And that's the first time I've seen that on a lake in twenty years. So that's a good sign. The deep water park was another issue, and so I, I do have support for this. Now, but early on, people look at me and say, you know, you got three heads or what? But in the main channel of the lake, which is about nine hundred acre, after twenty feet, there is no oxygen. It's dead, there are no fish, there is no life. The only thing that goes to that area is the cyanobacteria that makes the algae bloom. Cyanobacteria, in the daytime, they go to the shallow water, they come up and they make the green algae. At nighttime, they, they need food, and they go to the area where there's no oxygen, because there's no competition for the food. Cyanobacteria have been around for about five million years, they're surviving. What we're doing is interrupting that cycle. We're not gonna do away with it. What we're gonna, what we're gonna do is create an environment in the deep water of the lake where other microorganisms can go feed, starting with the little bugs, to the small fish, to the bigger fish. Right now, if you're fishing at twenty, twenty-five feet, thirty feet in the lake, you ain't catching nothing. Any fish that's there died. We just had a fish kill on the lake, and people are wondering what happened. Extreme change in temperatures. I'm not a biologist, but I do read a lot, and I talk to a lot of people. That extreme change, the fish went to an area where there's no oxygen and fish are habitual animal. And they went to this area and died. That's how you do fish kills. And with that extreme change affected the layer of oxygen, it went away. That was, ended the game. So this is very serious to me, I'm thrilled. So this is very serious to me, I'm, I'm thrilled. We had a meeting the other day with, with the principal, with the actual two leading scientists in the country. One of them is Fred Lubinoff. And he was involved with this. And what we're gonna do is it's a device that, brand new. So we'll be, we will be notable. And it's a device that sits on a bottom and you, it has a small pump in it. It actually, actually has an oxygen generator in it. And, and you supply a little bit of electricity to it and this pump makes oxygen and it goes horizontally. So it's not a bubbler. The problem with bubblers at deep water is it upsets the, the thermal balance of the lake. So we're gonna put oxygen from the bottom without interrupting the, the thermal climbs. So each thermal, each thermal climb will have oxygen in it, because the oxygen will go horizontally and it will, it will go into each thermal climb. It's pretty neat stuff. I've been working on this for three years. EverBlue Lakes, who did the aeration in Crescent Cove, will be one of the principal involved with the installation of this equipment. And it'll be, it requires lakefront power and small compressor to get the oxygen and electricity to the, to the device. The device that sits on the bottom is about four foot tall. It's a, like a big capsule and that'll be sitting on the bottom of the lake. It's pretty neat, you'll hear more about that, I'll be able to show some illustration, but it's about a year away. But this is something that you'll read about and, and Lake Apakon will be, will be.
It's cutting edge.
Be cutting edge and a model for other large, deep-water lakes to look at. Culver Lake is working on a similar system and they're looking to switch to what we're gonna go to. But in, in water less than thirty feet, it's not so good, but in water from thirty feet and deeper, it's very, very effective. It's a brand-new technology and we're pretty excited about that. And all the experts are agreeing that we, that we're gonna do, so it's moving forward very well. I, the tennis thing you talked about, John? The tennis program is cannibal because the school wanted to charge him, so the guy backed out. The liquor license issue in the state is, I'm in support with about ninety other mayors or a hundred, if you will, to, for the state to change the parameters of liquor licenses and bring it back more to local control and take it away from the state and make it more affordable to the smaller businesses. So I don't know where that's gonna go, but in a nutshell, that's pretty much what it's doing. And I'm also working on some affordable housing issues. I set on a state committee for affordable housing to understand it. We just hired or in process of hiring people that understand it. Because the, the affordable housing, not to be confused with, with, with the, with people who want to get that done. The legislation is complex. It's so complex that most people don't understand it, including some state committees. So I sit on that. And I also participate with a group that wants to bring controlled affordable housing back to the municipality. So we're trying to make it, we're trying to make the affordable housing issue and put it in English, so people can understand it[1695.48]